Call this evening's meeting to order and wish everyone a good evening and welcome to the Town of Sykesville Mayor and Town Council Meeting. Today is Monday, September 11th, 2023. We will call the meeting to order at 7:02. Thank you, Councilmember Grassley. We begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance and then I want to have a special moment of silence this evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just gonna read something here for us. This evening, let us remember the 2,977 souls whose lives were snuffed out, most of them in an instant. At the World Trade Center in New York City, 2,753 people died, of whom 343 were firefighters. The death toll at the Pentagon was 184, and 40 individuals died in a field in Shanksville, Pennsylvania. Portions of what I'm about to read are taken from this morning's edition of the New York Daily News. A generation of young adults has a hazy understanding of September 11th, 2001. In the service of national memory, this is our attempt to set down what happened that day and in its aftermath. The United States was forced to reckon with the sudden realization that people craved by Islamic radicalism, by a cold and backward vision for the planet, marked this messy and pluralistic republic for death because of our power and our policies and most of all of what we represent. From throughout five boroughs and 50 states, Samaritans descended on the place now called Ground Zero, where physical wreckage and human remains commingled. On that smoldering pile in the solemn resting place, those firefighters, police officers, ironworkers, and volunteers labored tirelessly, rescuing who they could, recovering what could be recovered. They walked into the rubble to help and emerged as heroes. They also emerged with afflictions that would plague their lives. The total killed slowly by these elements has now eclipsed the total violently ended on that day of carnage. In the wake of the mass murders, the county looked, the country looked as if for the first time, at shoring up every vulnerability to stop radical jihadists from harming us again. We did this quickly and imperfectly, on our airplanes and in our airports, our police departments, and our intelligence agencies. Young men and women went overseas in orders of presidents to try to cripple and kill the enemy and its enablers in foreign lands. They went to Afghanistan, which became America's longest war, where 2,465 U.S. servicemen and women died. They went to Iraq, where 4,586 of our countrymen and women died, all in the name of our safety, our freedom, to pursue happiness. For many of us, it feels like a lifetime ago, until it feels like yesterday. Let us never forget. And now for that moment of silence, please. Okay, thanks, everybody. All right, our first item of business is, as usual, public comments. I understand we do have a public comment for this evening. And as such, I just want to note that public comments are limited to three minutes. Please note that general public comments made at the beginning of any council meeting are meant for councils' consideration and its future determination of what, if any, action can or will be taken on the matter. The council is not permitted to hold a discussion at this time on any new business that has not previously been posted on the formal agenda for tonight's meeting. Though, should any of the council members have either follow-up questions or comments for the commenter this evening, they, of course, will be permitted to offer them. So, welcome, Jill?
Jill?
Yes. Actually, you can go to the podium for us, since we're being recorded and there's a mic up there. If you can just offer us your name, your address, and proceed.
I also said, I did not know about this time limit, so I'm gonna try to zip it along.
Okay. I'm sure I won't cut you off unless it's like, you know, five minutes, 10 minutes, 20, yeah.
It's not gonna be forever.
Okay.
I promise you it will not be long.
Okay, thank you.
Because I have important things.
Okay.
Okay, so, my name is Jill Arnold. I am at 7114 Harlan Lane, Sykesville. And I'm here just speaking on behalf of Sykesville Pottery and Art, the whole situation. Okay, I don't pretend to know everything that has led to the announcement of Sykesville Pottery and Art closing, as I'm sure there are reasons far beyond my understanding. But I do just want to let those involved know what this place means to the community, to the teens, to the pre-teens, to the children who may be struggling with depression, special needs, and just struggling to find somewhere to fit in. Ms. Abby has made this a safe haven, where kids and people from all backgrounds and abilities are welcome, accepted, and learn so much more than art. I have no idea the financial situation currently, and maybe there is no coming back from this, but I do feel that allowing the town to know the type of space that Ms. Abby has created on Main Street will either give pause, stimulate some type of agreement so that she can stay, or at least let you know the type of space that is desired to be there, hopefully, in the future. I would venture to say that this is the only fun supervised hangout for teens and pre-teens along Main Street that is also inclusive of families, ladies' nights, and great for attracting tourists. The best way to show you what this business means is actually from a review that I wrote about this special place back in 2022. So please note that this was not written in any need to convince anyone to change their mind. This was purely written on my appreciation for my favorite small businesses along Main Street, especially this place. Okay. Where do I start? Sykesville Pottery and Art is a special place for our family, both on a fine creative level, but also on a much more personal one as well. We love the comfortable atmosphere that Abby has created in this business owned by her eldest son, Christopher, with floors that have been loved on by paint sprinkles and other hints of artwork that have been left by so many kids over the years. Much like the warm fuzzy memories that you make baking cookies and unconditional love in your grandmother's kitchen, there's also unspoken understanding that everyone is treated equally, and all differences are very warmly welcomed at Sykesville Pottery and Art. While canvas and pottery painting are the focus, and one-on-one or group lessons are available, this business has managed to create such a unique atmosphere among children, pre-teens, and teens. In a small town where there could be a struggle to find appropriate places for teenagers to spend their time, they provide this so perfectly with the occasional pizza and art Friday nights, which also allows parents to enjoy a nice evening, knowing that their children are engaging in more than video games and Netflix. Abby teaches the art foundations, but what I love is how she turns what children think are mistakes into beautiful masterpieces that boost their at times wavering confidence. I have heard numerous children going to Sykesville Pottery and Art from three years old all the way through high school, and now I see why. Our son has Tourette's Syndrome, and we are realizing that his time spent in this special place of business is a time where his tics quiet tremendously, which gives him a great relief. He is doing what he loves in an atmosphere of support and understanding. No matter how children act at school or at home, something about this small business changes each and every child for the better from the moment that they walk in those doors. Some become more understanding, some become more social, some become more confident. This place is a place, this all takes place even just within the first room. Some people never even go far beyond that. But, I don't know if it was remembering the movie Ghost or my very need to find a different creative outlet, but I decided to surprise my daughter with the pottery wheel lessons for her and I. Why should kids get to have all the fun? Abby's husband, Mike, is the pottery expert. He was patient and knowledgeable, giving us instructions, but then allowed us to try and fail and try again. He was helpful in giving us more than one way at achieving the same goal. Having my hands on the clay was so soothing. I love being messy. So often in life, everything has to be just so, with all the i's dotted and the t's crossed. But with art and with Abby, beauty is found in the mess. Definitely don't dress nice. We put our messiest sweatpants and shirts on and headed down to have a messy, beautiful mother-daughter time. I heard both of us encouraging and helping each other, as well as laughing while learning something new together. It was nice to have something outside the box to do, and now we have our achievements to look at and remember this special time. Again, another warm memory made right here in our little town on Main Street. Most of the time, it doesn't matter when you call or what is going on, Abby goes out of her way to accommodate within reason. She holds kids accountable in her Abby-loving way, as she sees the amazing adults that they will one day be. She appreciates the honor of providing a place of acceptance where kids of all ages can have the room to change shape over time to become the unique individuals they will be, much as they are creating and shaping their own pieces of art along the way. I do venture to say that Abby probably views each child, in addition to her own, that comes in the door as her life's favorite pieces of art. Thank you for taking time to read this and learn more about this fantastic small business in the hopes that we can keep that portion of Main Street welcoming and exciting for all ages and abilities in some way. Then, so my son has been going there for several years, and his self-confidence with a disability can be wavering at some times. And now, what could... So now, you guys, like Ms. Abby has been working with these kids and just developing him, and he, with her help, he got accepted into the higher-level art in high school that only upperclassmen get to go to, so that's him. Then, what other 14-year-old plans his own Mother's Day gift for his mom for the very first time and did a little mom-son painting? So this was actually mine. And Ms. Abby was saying, Jill, get out of your head. It doesn't have to be perfect. I was making everything very symmetrical, very perfect, and Ethan and Abby just came along. She was like, Jill, mess up a little bit, mess up. And Ethan came along. So this is created by all three of us, and just the magic that happens in there. And I also have letters from people in the community just with their thoughts and everything that that business means to them.
Thank you, Jill.
Yep.
So just as a matter of procedure, I personally would like to hear everything in terms of the conversation.
And I appreciate that, because that's, and we do have a second speaker now, so, and I appreciate that, thanks. We did need to do that for procedural reasons, so continue, please.
I also emailed you something too from an actual art student. That is a student there, a student with Cassie. And she actually had her presentation, she did something like Heroes, and she did it about Ms. Abby, and it was televised on the news. So I emailed that to you guys as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Plitt. I live at 7106 Harlan Lane, down the street from Jill. I'm here with my daughter, Cassie, who just wants to hear me speak today. So I am, I don't know what happened with Sykesville Art and Pottery. I don't, I know Abby does not want to leave. It's been very emotional for my daughter, me, myself, a lot of hugs. Again, I don't know what happened, I don't know, she doesn't want to go, but she's leaving. And it's, it's just really sad that, you know, she's been a part of this community for so many years and is no longer going to be. So I moved in in January 2010 to Sykesville. It was easy to remember because it was a week before she was born, so, and we started going to Sykesville Art and Pottery in 2015. So with her being five and my other daughter being seven or eight, depending on what year it was, and you're like, how do you remember that? It's because I created a wonderful memory at Sykesville Art and Pottery. So, and each of my girls write their name on my mug, and I wrote the year 2015. So, and that was our first encounter at Sykesville Art and Pottery. And believe me, my girls were no artists. This is fuzzy. That's her first masterpiece, and then this is my other daughter's first masterpiece, Carly. They both have letters that were submitted to you as well. So by naming born artist, but they started going to camps there and would go to camps several days, several weeks out of the summer. It's just a great camp with like, just very personal attention to the kids and what they do. And so in August of 2019, again, I have such a great memory, I had to look it up on Facebook when I posted, my daughter, my older daughter, who was the week of her 12th birthday, was in camp that week. And at the end of the week, she showed me what she did. This hangs on my entrance wall, I'm gonna get it framed eventually, but to have a 12-year-old, you know, create this, and it's not, Abby doesn't do it for her. She doesn't, you know, she tells, she shows them what to do, she shows them how to do that. And that's 12-year-old artists right there. And, you know, I'm just still blown away by that piece when she gave it to me, so. And then, like Jill said, it's very personal with Abby. So last year, Cassie, she didn't, wasn't registered for camp this week, she'd always let her drop in, and it was one week in July that she wanted to go help out at Sykesville Art and Pottery. I'm like, all right, I'll take you down to go help out at Sykesville Art and Pottery, because Abby's like very accommodating, whatever. Little did I know that, I don't know how it came about, but those two plotted together, and she wasn't helping out. She was creating the most, probably the most special gift I've ever received. It was, that week was our 20th wedding anniversary. And her and Abby, I don't know how it came up or who plotted, who figured it out, but 20 years is China. So while she was helping out, she was creating a 20-year anniversary masterpiece of koi, which is China, it was just so special, like what her and Abby did together for, you know, and I was completely, you know, blown away, you know. It's just so surprising that that's what they were doing. I don't know how it came about, if it was her idea, if it was Abby's idea, or if they came together and, you know, figured it out. But it's not about just, you know, the art they created and just the sense of, you know, belonging for all the kids there. It's about the friends that Cassie, you know, particularly Cassie. My older daughter went there, did masterpieces, and she's 16 now, she does the thing, but, like, Cassie became friends with like people she probably wouldn't have become friends with, like outside of Sykesville Art and Pottery, you know, and they became a good team. They volunteered at the farmer's market, handing out candy. They, I think this is before the trio became a trio, but painting the snaggy guest or snally guest or prints along the sidewalk. You know, they do that, it's just something that they wanted to do, just because they wanted to, you know, be a part of the Sykesville Art and Pottery community. So they got the brains, the jock, and just the regular kid. I mean, just three different kids, just all coming together, you know, at just a place where they all felt welcome, so. I'm really sad it's leaving, but we just wanted to come and express, you know, that I don't know why it happened, but we're just sad it's going.
Thank you. And since your mom did all that talking, you don't have any intention of speaking?
She wrote a letter.
She will dedicate her work, and outside of our families too, and parents.
We're not going to have an opportunity to read it during open session, but I can assure you that we'll all read them after.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, and while you're here, I can actually give a little background to your questions. It all has to do with the sale of the building. The building was sold earlier this year. There were several bidders. I was heavily involved in the negotiations, several bidders. The downtown Sykesville connection who ultimately bought the building was the only one that was going to let them stay in beyond 30 days. Every other bidder was going to clear them out. The DSC then had to go in, there were no smoke detectors in there, no fire alarms, no burglar alarms, nothing. They were running the kiln 24/7 with no smoke detector. But once the DSC took it over, they agreed to allow the pottery center to stay there through the summer, because that's their busiest time with the summer camps and to let them make money. But the only way to do the renovations that are needed in that building is for them to completely clear out. Renovations are going to take about two months. They have been offered the ability to go back in after the renovations are complete, and they have declined to do that. So they, they had the opportunity to go back in, and they, as far as I know, they've said no, or there's been no response. But the only, the only way to do the repairs and renovations to that building is for it to be completely empty.
The building was neglected for a very, very long time, and it required being brought up to code and so on and so forth. I know that because of the business dealings with the DSC. But it doesn't change, it doesn't change anything that you all said.
And it's just, it's the only place that's not food or drink that provides something to do.
Well, there's a handful of other places and other opportunities that aren't necessarily in brick and mortar, but, but I know that this is a very special place for your families. And, and we're working on making Main Street, Sykesville, a very inclusive and welcoming place, so unfortunately, a business decision is a business decision, and we don't have any control over that. Thank you, though, for sharing.
Thank you.
Before you all leave, so, also raised my kids with Abby, love her to death, so what you've experienced, I think, is inclusive of her wherever she is, and we met her actually when she was, started on Liberty and Love, that she moved into town, and so I do hope that there's some way to, you know, keep her somewhere in the community, because I would agree with you, the impact is lifelong. My kids are older and they always go back and say hi to her, so, yeah.
Absolutely.
So thank you for speaking.
Thank you, guys. Have a good week. Okay, that brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is a consent agenda, which only includes the minutes. So presuming that all have reviewed these minutes and that there are not any requests for edits or changes, hearing none, we have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
All right, so the motion on the table is to approve the meeting minutes from August 14th. All in favor, please signal with a raised hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I got you.
Sorry, sir.
It's okay. Any opposed, and I think that opposed was, that was a late approval.
That was a late aye.
Well, then, we will unanimously approve the meeting minutes from August 14th. Thank you. First item of new business is to consider, discuss, or and act on a new job description and position, the administrative assistant. Just give a quick summary and then I'll turn this over to Joe. The town has been short one position at the townhouse since the circuit rider position was vacated earlier this year. The administrative assistant position is being proposed to fill the vacancy while allowing other established staffing positions of the clerk and treasurer more ability to focus on their essential duties. Joe?
Really, just to, I guess, reiterate that, this is, this would be a full-time position here at the townhouse. It would be, you know, again, we consider it entry level, but the benefits would be available to this, this person. And again, when evaluating kind of how we wanted to structure the folks here, is like, we just felt that this position would actually improve the efficiencies of some of our other departments and give them a little more free time to focus on the things that we really want them to focus on. So again, that's what culminated in the, in the job description and this proposal, and obviously available to answer any questions anyone might have on what our goals with this position are.
Okay. I also want to announce, as per our staff report, just for the edification of the public, that the funding for this position will largely be covered by shifting funds originally anticipated for the circuit rider position, which was in that column of consulting fee, to the salary line item under the administration category. Does anyone have any questions for staff?
So will the, will the circuit rider money cover the full position, or will have to add a little bit to it for this budget?
In all likelihood, it'll cover it for this fiscal year, just because we're kind of late to the game, so, you know, it's not going to be a whole year's worth of salary. But when we look at next fiscal year's budget, you'll see that salary item probably kick up just a little bit more.
Okay.
And again, we don't, obviously, there's benefits involved too, so there'll be a little adjustment in those categories, but again, I don't think it's going to be material.
And do we have to change the town charter to add this position to the townhouse, or is discretionary?
Right, yeah, not all, not all positions are listed in the charter.
Okay, good questions. Anyone else?
So I had two questions. Curious why the position will report to the town manager, and I was anticipating more the town clerk. Is it because the person will be serving in, really helping multiple departments? Is that the reasoning, or is there something else?
They will, plus, you know, everybody else in the townhouse answers, you know, directly back to the town manager, so, you know, we just wanted to keep it consistent.
So not part of a, so all coming back, not part of another department?
Correct.
And then is there, so, two more questions, sorry. Succession management for this position, would they have the opportunity to stay within this position and possibly be able to move ahead within the, within the town?
Absolutely. So again, anytime we, you know, establish a new position like this, again, it's entry level, so, you know, as they establish themselves and become, you know, a key player, you know, there could be a potential where maybe we do expand the treasurer's department and they become more of a accounting clerk or something along those lines. But again, because we wanted to keep it entry level and kind of test this out and see how it works, that's, that's why we structured it the way we have.
And then the last question has to do more with the circuit rider sort of role, and that's moved into the planning department. Are we keeping up with the same amount of grants that we did before? Any, any issues, any gaps there?
Certainly none yet. You know, I think, you know, there were, I want to say around 10 or so grants that we were either managing or applying for at the time that Jared left us for Boonsborough, and we've been able to keep up with all of those to date, so I guess it's just a matter of kind of wait and see and make sure that we're staying on top of it.
Would this person be able to assist the planning department if they needed to with any of those sort of functions, or no?
They could, but again, because the planning department already has two employees, so we have obviously the town player and then also the development coordinator.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Are we not going to pursue a circuit rider grant at this point in time?
We are not. And again, that had largely to do with, when we had those conversations with MRDC, it was basically a cost increase for what we were already getting. So we were actually going to get less service for more money.
Lots more money.
Right. It just didn't make a lot of sense, that's why we kind of went this direction instead.
You can call our former fees grandfathered in, I think, on a mistake for several years, so, yeah, a new position would have been way more expensive.
Okay.
Anyone else? I have some questions that would be helpful, I think, for everyone. First question is, Joe, does the addition of this new position in any way affect the job description responsibilities of our development coordinator, which is held by Jana?
Again, there might be a few things that end up coming out of, and again, I don't even know if it's specifically job duties that are in the job description, but things that she's currently doing.
Yes.
Might come out.
Okay, okay. I know, before I start reading these questions off, I know that having an administrative assistant will certainly free up your time in manners that I will love to see. So we've been very busy lately, and I'm sure everyone here at the table knows that, so. So the most up-to-date version of the clerk's job description that I can find is, I believe, dated 2016. And so just for my edification and to help us make this decision, it helps me to understand, I guess, beyond the job description that's been given for this new administrative assistant role, which ones of those are currently being done by the clerk, so that we can see there's a clear delineation between the need for this position and not. So I'm just going to read a couple of these off, or several, Joe, and if you can just tell me if these responsibilities will become that of the new administrative assistance role. So preparing meeting agendas and packets of related information and cooperation with town manager for meetings, and record the proceedings and prepare minutes for each meeting.
All of those, same with the clerk.
Okay. Will the clerk continue to serve as liaison of the HDC and all of the duties therein?
As of right now, yes. This is, there might be a kind of a larger view as to how we look at individual staff members and who should, and I guess what they should and should not be doing with different committees and commissions. You know, being a former clerk, recovering clerk myself, you know, I've always thought clerks are the, they're the record keeper of the entire town, not just one department or one committee or commission. So again, with, you know, potential further restructuring or shifting responsibilities around, it might be the case where the clerk actually takes over responsibilities for minutes and record keeping of all of the committees and commissions, and then the actual running of those meetings, or at least the liaisons to those meetings, might actually fall back to the planning department.
Okay. I know you and I had discussed that, and I wanted everyone, that's wonderful to know. Supervise municipal elections, including preparation, distribution of ballots, so on and so forth.
Still in progress.
And I know that that's left up to the council to determine every two years on election years, as well as a procedural matter. Plan and direct maintenance, filing, safekeeping, and computerization of all municipal documents, et cetera, et cetera. Includes, this activity includes advertising and executing ordinances, resolutions, and proclamations, and publishing, recording and archiving them appropriately, file all necessary legislative documents with the county, state, and federal agencies.
Still in progress.
Issue public notification of official meetings and events. This activity includes advertising of executive or closed sessions, special meetings, et cetera.
Correct.
Maintain and update the town's website as needed.
Still in progress.
Prepare news flashes and post information on social media sites. Okay. Through the town manager, respond to requests for information from the public, other municipalities, state officials, and state and federal legislative offices.
Still, still the record keeper.
And this one has already been determined. And this one has already been determined to become a job of the new administrative assistant role. So I won't get into it because it was in the list of, of job, job responsibilities for the new position, but it was to coordinate general front office operations, et cetera. I think this one is entirely, in its entirety, is also shifting to the new position of administrative assistant. Collect monies received, compile and balance the weekly bank deposit for the town treasurer.
That's right.
Okay. And this one too, I believe, oversee contracts for housekeeping, cell phones, telephones, copy, receiving oil, electricity, fuel, et cetera.
Right now, that's staying with the clerk, but in all likelihood, that likely will transition away.
Okay, great. And just a couple more. Believing this too will shift to the admin assist assistant. Maintain a list of authorized employees who drive town vehicles and use the town account for purchases of fuel. This activity includes setting up an account and distribution of cards for each employee and vehicle for the use of an approved gas station.
Yeah. So again, if it's, if it's money related, we'd like to see it properly switch, switch over to the treasurer's department. However, we do want the clerk to be focused more on the HR responsibilities. So some of the, you know, what employee has what car and, you know, what are their responsibilities and make sure they have proper certifications and, uh, HR files are kept up to date would be the clerk.
Okay. Thank you. So that means the next five are mostly going to stay with the, the duties of the clerk. Their HIPAA security official, maintain oversight of contracts for local government insurance trust, yeah, and ensure workers' compensation, health insurance, volunteer insurance, et cetera. And that gets us to the last few. How about work with Maryland Municipal League for the yearly scholarship award and assist the new council members orientations program? So I'd actually like to see a greater focus on the new council member orientation program because I think that's kind of fallen to the wayside. So maybe in two years, that'll be a big deal. God bless you, Mark. Assist the mayor and town council with MML quarterly dinner meetings and Banner City correspondences. Coordinate the town employees to obtain, to obtain information to produce quarterly town newsletter. Good. This activity includes editing, printing, mailing. Then...
Though I'm sure we'd love to assign that to somebody else. We're not going to.
Well, listen, I wouldn't mind doing it myself. So that's cool. So that's good to know. And my, the last one listed here, actually the last two, assistant filing vacant positions by advertising, scheduling interviews, and proceeding, processing needed paperwork. Okay. And the last one, coordinate with Little Sykes Railway to ensure it is properly licensed and inspected through.
Yeah. That, that's going to stay with the clerk. So again, the idea here being is like the clerk role and really the town manager role. And again, this is probably a little bit of bias just because this is how my transition worked, was they become more of a, I guess, a partner in the administration of the entire town.
Got it. Okay. And I think that was most important for the edification of the, the public, to be honest, because I think it's important for us to know what salaries are paying for and what people's roles are and who we turn to on a daily basis for the clock to tick. Okay? Cool. All right. Thank you for satisfying my edification, Joe.
Absolutely.
So at this point, are there any more questions for staff?
I'm just worried Carrie's going to ask for a raise now with all that.
Those are already Carrie's responsibility. Hopefully she knew about them prior to me reading them to everyone. I'm sure she did. So the staff's recommendation is to move to approve the proposed job description for the administrative assistant as presented and authorize staff to begin the recruitment and hiring process. With no further discussion, is there a motion to bring forward on this item?
So moved.
Thank you. And that is, uh, first motion is made by Councilman Keenan. Thank you.
Seconded.
Maybe it is, uh, maybe I shouldn't get looked at. I got hit by the ball yesterday. Uh, so Councilman Keenan makes the first and seconded by, who was it over there?
Me.
Thank you. Councilman Mark. Is, um, there any further need for debate or conversation? All right.
Questions after this vote?
I'm sorry?
Questions after this vote. It has nothing to do with the vote.
Oh, okay. Very good. Great. All right. So then, uh...
Anything to do with this issue?
Yes.
I think you should ask him now.
Don't ask him yet.
Yeah.
When do you plan on, you plan on posting it?
Correct.
And when do you plan on posting it?
As soon as possible.
Like tomorrow?
It's probably not going to be tomorrow, but hopefully by the end of the week.
Okay. And then you'll have it up for a duration of time?
Yeah, typically, you know, two, three weeks is a general timeframe that we like to advertise positions. We'll, we'll try to dip into several areas. But again, being that it's an entry level position, you know, we hope, you know, one or two spots generates enough interest where we have, you know, I like to say, you know, 20 applicants is usually a good pool, but, uh, you know, it doesn't mean that we have to wait for that.
Okay. And you'll have information on our website for those that are watching, listening?
Absolutely.
The clerk will post that.
Yes.
Indeed.
And that will, that will remain her, one of her duties.
Perfect. Wonderful.
Not hers. One of the clerk's duties because that may shift in the future.
And it'll be hip.
That's right. That's right. All right. So with the motion on the table to approve the proposed job description for administrative assistant as presented and authorize staff to begin the recruitment and hiring process, please vote now. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. That looks like a unanimous motion being passed. Yeah, it's, uh, not that it matters, but I'll call it out. It's, uh, 7:37. All right. Um, our next item of new business is to consider, discuss, and act on a referral of a zoning map amendment request for the property located at 7306 Springfield Avenue. A brief summary on this item on the agenda is the following. The town has received a request to modify the current zoning map for the property located at 7306 Springfield Avenue. And I know Joe's going to dig in here for us, but I just want to comment on the fact that our job here this evening is to vote to refer this to the planning commission and doing so indicates neither a approval or denial of what it is that will come back to us from, from the planning commission. Joe?
Uh, again, just from a process standpoint, like, like the mayor said, a process for any kind of map amendment or text amendment to the zoning ordinance requires it be referred to the planning commission. The planning commission makes a study and recommendation that will come back to council at some point in the future, whenever they are, they have completed that study and recommendation. Council will hold a public hearing on that recommendation and then ultimately decide whether or not it's a good or bad amendment to the, to the zone. This one in particular, um, has been, I guess, the subject to many conversations over the past year, probably even longer than a year or so, in that it's a very small property on Springfield Avenue at the corner of Springfield and Central. It's been the subject to a lot of questions and concerns when people started actually using that property again for what that building is really designed to do. And again, at least from a staff standpoint, when we look at it, making it a compliant use by changing the zone from the business local zone to a general business zone seems to make the most sense just because it's a, it's such a small property. I'd describe it as a postage stamp. There's not much else that could probably happen there other than what is being proposed. And the fact that it's already basically spot zoned. So it's already, uh, the business local zone that it currently has is in and of itself on an island right there with residential surrounding it, a park to one side, and then an institutional use, which is the school across there. So staff has been in communication with the property owners and their representatives over the last year. And, you know, we do think that this is the, I guess, the best way forward for this particular property. So we are supportive of at least sending it to planning commission and giving the planning commission their ability to make that investigation and ultimate recommendation to council.
Thank you. And so now the council has the ability to offer any potential initial reactions to the petition and if you'd like to also provide the planning commission with some direction for their review. I could start or I could start to my left. Why don't we do that?
I guess I'm, I'm just concerned that we follow all applicable rules. Someone actually contacted me. Their, their concern, completely unfounded, but I don't have any evidence to, but we want, want to be sure that toxic waste is properly handled. That makes perfect sense. That is something I'd like them to stress to make sure that who, whatever happens, and I've actually spoken to you, so I won't deny, you know, remind people to follow the rules and I'm good.
Yeah. And I think one thing, just to kind of build upon that is, you know, if it were zoned correctly and, you know, the, the change of zoning does happen, let's just make that assumption, is it would have to go through a site plan process and all of those rules and regulations that are associated with any type of use that were going there would be the purview of the planning commission and they would make sure that all of those things weren't back happening.
And therefore I'd be satisfied. So that's, that was my one concern.
Thank you, Councilman Dyer. Councilman Scopis?
So a couple of things. You just alluded to the fact that it's not properly zoned. Is that right?
That is correct.
And why do you think that?
Because the business local district doesn't allow for repair operations. They allow for service stations, which is interesting. So it could be a gas station, but it can't be a maintenance.
Which it was.
But it can't be a service repair station.
So as of right now, they're operating a business that should not, they should not be able to operate based on their current use?
Yeah. And I guess the, the, I don't want to say argument, but the thing that we've at least noticed from a staff standpoint is though there's activity there, we're not sure there's lots of evidence of business operation. You know, there are no hours posted, there's no signs, there's no advertisements that you see of this business. Now, again, we could, we could certainly pursue that and, and attempt to, you know, lock the doors and make sure that there's no activity there. But, you know, part of me kind of looks at it from the standpoint of if somebody were working on their car in a, in a garage that is associated with their, with their house, that's really what's happening there, or at least, you know, on the level of something like that.
And then the second question I have is in reference to the zoning update that we're doing. So this is a, a single one-off request that's come in. I presume there could be others that come in during the process. How do the two marry up to each other?
Well, really, in the, in the general business or business local zones, I'm not sure there's going to be a ton of changes with those, with those particular areas. How they marry up is really just a matter of whether or not we want to take this particular issue up now or whether or not we wanted to wait and make it a part of a more comprehensive view or look at our entire code.
And if we, we, I, I'm not sure if I have a, an opinion as of yet. I need to hear more. But if we did want to wait and do a more comprehensive look, then how do we deal with a business that is doing something that is not necessarily a permitted use during that timeframe?
Yeah. I think, you know, at this point, you know, we were, we looked at it from a standpoint of if we knew this application was going to be coming. So we were like, okay, well, if you wanted to do minor, uh, you, or utilize that property for, you know, let's just call it minor uses, then by all means, you can go ahead and do that, assuming that there was going to be this application pending. If we decide to put the brakes on that, knowing that in all likelihood, our zoning review or zoning, our comprehensive zoning review is going to take 12 to 18 months, we would have to stop them from doing that.
Do we create a precedent by us being engaged in a conversation for a year or more with a non-permitted use being allowed to be able to actually occur, understanding that the application is there? Is there a legal precedent that's created?
No. I mean, anytime we can say, okay, this has to stop.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Thank you.
I have a question. With the documents that were provided, you had mentioned that the property is on the corner. It's the postage stamp property. But the documents that I saw, it looked like that there were three distinct parcels. Thank you. Now, are they requesting that all three parcels be rezoned?
No. It's just the one, the one.
Triangle.
The one parcel that includes the building.
Parcel one.
Correct.
On, on the plat.
The other parcel, which I believe the trucks for construction are being parked. They, they own that property.
They do.
Just for public's information.
Yeah.
Where the, the contractors who are working at Springfield are parking their vehicles. Yes.
Yes. So all of that is owned by the same property owner, but they're just requesting the corner lots to be rezoned.
Because right now, that's the only property that is spot zoned business local.
Okay.
And the rest of them are?
Something else.
Well, it raises a good question and it was one I was going to ask. So this is a good, are you finished, President Carter?
I, I was going to say, I mean, could they ask to change that? Now they're going to expand their business to this other property. Are we gonna, are we going to specifically say?
Well, again, I, I think in our conversations with the applicant was we wanted them to keep it limited to the, to only the business zoned property rather than expanding it to anything else because we didn't want this to be, well, we're expanding this business district now in that, in that particular area. Some of those adjacent lots can still be used for, you know, in our zoning code right now, it does allow for off-site parking. And again, I know parking at that corner has been one of the issues that people have mentioned several times. So it's like having one of those adjacent parcels dedicated to parking so that it would not block the line of sight. They're coming off Central Avenue would be something that we would look at at a site plan level, assuming the zoning goes forward.
Okay. That was my question.
Great. Thank you. And so along those same lines, the formal railroad, former railroad parcel, which is about a 20-foot wide alley, I like to call it, behind the building, that too is not part of this request then.
It is not.
But it is being used to park two, to four, to six sometimes, cars jammed in behind there on any given day. So how, as, that's obviously an extension of their business use, this particular business use of the, of the parcel that is part of the petition. I'm going to recommend to the planning commission that that kind of be part of their review process, just to see if there's any contraindication to that or any, anything that outside of a site plan would be affected by the change of use permitted by way of the change of the zoning to the front parcel affecting that small strip in the back. If that makes sense.
Can I, can I restate it to just be, be sure that I understand?
Please.
So the applicants come in and ask for parcel one to be reviewed. You're asking for the planning commission to review the other two parcels.
Adjacent.
That are adjacent to see if a change in zoning have any impact on them?
Yes.
Okay.
Over the long run, based, well, no, but I'll expand that a little bit further, specifically based on two things. One, the known business model that is going to be taking place there because we've seen it. It's kind of difficult to separate the two. I think from the planning commission's perspective, it's going to be difficult because they are not mutually exclusive, right? The, the change in this zone will allow for a business model that we already know about by a particular business owner to behave in ways that we already know about. And it does affect those other parcels. And so at some point or another, that all has to be considered in some fashion. But also in future, this business owner, you know, is not going to be there infinitum. So, you know, but those parcels are still there.
So maybe to follow up on it, and this I need to learn more about how the parcels work and what's permitted use. Right now, you're able to do additional parking, but can you have a parking lot? I guess that would be the...
Yes, off-site parking is allowed.
Is there a distinction? So off-site parking could mean parking lot?
Yes.
Page parking lot.
Correct. Now, again, all that, all of that would be included in a site plan process.
Right, right.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to skip myself with a couple more questions I have because they might come up over here.
Really?
Yes. Councilmember Geral.
Thank you.
Yes.
So lots of emotional questions. So I live in this neighborhood. I would not agree with your characterization from, from what I see. I think there's a very active business there with multiple cars being repaired on a regular basis. They might not post hours, but they're there all the time, working now. I think in the beginning, there was an attempt to conceal it. The interior of the building was, was redesigned. The light, the windows were blacked out and replaced. You know, unfortunately, before that, it was an eyesore, you know, broken glass, broken windows, a lot of concern on the former railroad portion of the, of the, of the plat that we have in front of us as a place where kids actually would go back either doing graffiti, but also riding skateboards out into the streets. So there was a lot of concern about safety, the kids coming out from the middle school. When we talk about our beloved crossing guard, this is exactly where they're standing, right in front of this building. So I've noticed since the family has returned, and the emotional part is this is a family that's been in the community for an extended period of time. And so, you know, I would like to support local businesses. I'd like to support local families as much as possible. I know at one point, I think there, you know, we looked at whether or not we could honor the family in a different way when the property wasn't being used with maybe a parklet and a real kind of explanation of the work that Mr. Joy did there and what he brought to the community. So I don't want to lose that in the discussion of what's happening today. And I don't know if there's a way the planning commission can look at, you know, or we can look at how we separate those two because I would like to honor the family. I think there's been, historically, Mr. Joy, you know, had a lot to offer. And it's even mentioned, I guess, in the, the write-up.
The petition.
You know, and that the kids used to go there. mentioned, I guess, in the write-up, you know, that the kids used to go there, hopefully always paid for candy, although I understand it wasn't always paid for.
Paid for or not, the litter ended up in front of the Link residence, but go ahead.
So, I mean, I would agree, when it was a gas station, the kids would stop there. I don't see in the business plan that returning. So, I mean, because they kind of allude to that being part of it, but I wish they were here today, because I like, I don't understand.
The gas tanks were removed.
The gas tanks were removed, but there was a little convenience store on the inside, and they refer to it in their petition, so I'm not clear, are they intending for that to return?
Well, again, this is, that's, you're kind of digging way too deep into the weeds on this particular process, because again, they don't need to propose a business model right now.
It's just, they alluded to it in the, so I wasn't sure what the, why they were referencing it in their application. So I think that's a question for me. But I would say it's very different having, being in the community, having a repair shop there versus a gas station. So in a gas station, we have the pumps out, and the cars would come and go. In the repair shop, and because it is so small, and I guess I wonder about the ability to run this business in a point-two acre lot, you know, you cannot see around them. It is absolutely an accident waiting to happen. When the vehicles are parked in front, which is technically the only part that they're asking for, the business piece, you cannot see coming out of Central Avenue, any of the traffic coming towards you, which requires you to move out into the street, right, to try and see the traffic coming from the left.
Can I clarify two pieces? Because I hear you asking the planning commission to look at two different things. One, is a change in zoning going to present a safety issue? And two, is there anything the planning commission can do, and I don't know if the town can help support this, but look to see if this sort of, well, I guess it could be a group of different businesses that would be in this zoning package, that would be permitted uses typically occur within a lot the size that that lot is there? Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. I mean, I just, it doesn't.
We could capture those in the notes, just so that it's all clear about what the planning commission's looking for, that'd be great.
Yeah, it just doesn't seem to have enough space for multiple vehicles on a daily basis in and out. Yeah, I did speak with the, I was walking through the neighborhood and ran into the Joys, and, you know, had asked them to speak with the person, the business owner of the, you know, to move the truck, there's a big black truck that, so they've moved that, but then there are other vehicles that are there. And some, and usually, so if you, and I don't know if for the planning commission actually seeing this might be helpful versus just on a.
Papers.
Paper.
Several of us have gone up and looked at it.
Okay. So on the, this far-left portion where the door is, into the old office and the convenience store side, that's where they park on kind of this, because they're parking by the office, that's where the most hazard comes from seeing things. The other problem is, when they park right there, that's the crosswalk. And as they've mentioned in the, in their report or request, there's a lot more activity going on in that space. So we have a lot of people at the splash park now in the summer, you know, I think we've already mentioned in previous conversations, the increase of children at the middle school, which is only increasing even more, and kids are, so kids are walking through this, people are walking through this. They had also mentioned in it the sidewalk plan for the town, and if you were to put a sidewalk, which I would love to see, because there's not one on their property right now, that would actually eliminate most of the parking in the front for them. So like, you know.
Right.
To make it safe, it would diminish even the point-two space. So I guess I just, those are the questions that I have of kind of understanding the intent of the use.
So on this last one, because this last one, I, well, we haven't put all these things together, so there's a connectivity study that was done some time ago. Does the town have more information in reference to that could provide to the planning commission to see if that, because I would imagine we probably need to go with an easement if we're going to put on a sidewalk there?
Actually, the sidewalk there is proposed in what the state's about to do.
And what the state's going to do.
On Springfield Avenue.
Okay.
And that will actually be part of this.
Yes.
Posted stamp.
Yes.
All right, so then that needs to be added into sort of the analysis that the planning commission does as well.
Yeah, so I, if you put a sidewalk in that property, I don't know where they would park or how they'd get in, because the initial.
Well, and I know it's difficult, because it's front and center, and this is what everybody sees, is that there's a difference between the analysis of whether or not the zone is appropriate, and then there's a difference between, all right, now we're getting to site plan questions. And a lot of what we're talking about right now is site plan related.
Okay.
So if the zone doesn't go through, then we don't need to worry about it, because there's not going via site plan.
Okay.
So until we get to the point where we're going to allow, whether or not this property, make a determination whether or not this property should or should not be zoned, what they are requesting, it's hard for us to really get into, well, how should we structure the lot? Or what makes it safe to operate the business that they are proposing? And again, that's kind of when we get to site plan.
I guess the counter to what you're saying, though, is that we're looking at, I didn't look to see the acreage, but I'll take you.
They said point-two acres.
So point-two acres for that lot, you throw in a sidewalk, now it's point-one-seven-five or something, or whatever it turns out to be.
That includes the building, too.
It's still point-two, actually.
It's still two, okay.
But the building's on there, it decreases, when you're talking about not just a walk-up business, right, but you're talking about vehicles, I guess there's, you know, and we're, I know we're redoing our zoning, and like, some guidance around the size requirement. So I know, like, in certain businesses, there are certain number of parking spots, right, that are required for, so you would, so.
Based on use and square footage.
Yeah, so I mean, like, all of that, like, how do we then determine, like, you could never have a X on X side, like, X type of business will always require X type of.
And that analysis is what I was referring to before, about changing it from the current zoning to the proposed zoning, is to look at that analysis.
Right, and again, depending on what business you're talking about, because again, any kind of change of use like that would require a new site plan and show us, you know, okay, well, how are you going to handle parking there? And how are you going to do all of these things? It kind of triggers all of those different analysis. Whereas, you know, right now, alls we're talking about is, should it be business local or should it be general business?
So the zoning comes first.
Correct.
Then the.
Right.
Site plan.
Yes.
You can't have a site plan, and then determine if you want to change the zoning.
No, because you can't propose a site plan for a use that's not allowed. Or at least you can't approve one, let's put it that way.
And then just finally, I would agree with Councilman Schofield, just in the precedent that this has set, and I understand it's delicate and everything, but of allowing a business to visibly, at least to the neighbors, run a very active business in, you know, zoning that isn't structured, and kind of what is our position as a town, how do we manage it?
Yeah, and I'll just say this, and again, we can, we can put a stop to it tomorrow. I mean, again, that's just, and we can just simply say that while this is, while this application's pending, you know, you had, you had some goodwill, at least in the beginning, but it's been there for a year, and now it has to stop, at least until a decision's ultimately made on the zoning.
Well, the toilet on the front porch that was there for a couple of weeks was a nice touch. It was very artistic, but yeah, I was getting a little tired of it.
And I didn't say, I'm sorry, I didn't say anything in reference to it, I asked a question about the precedent, I, again, I.
I guess, yeah, for me, I worry that there is a precedent that we're setting, and.
I mean, again, precedent requires us to take some sort of formal action, and we have not done that. So like I said, if it's, if it's simply, you know, we're tired of seeing what's happening there happening, then we can stop it.
Councilmember Grassley.
Are you done?
It is now your chance to hold the conch shell.
So I really, we're kind of comparing this to somebody putting up a new building, it sounds like, and it's been there forever, they're not really changing the structure, they're just going to start a business, or do what it was made to do, I think. It's one bay. The parking issues, I thought it was just one bay.
It's two bays.
Two bays. They're going to put the, the parking issues, if you go down to Old Town Motors sometimes, it's hard to park in Old Town Motors, that's where I put my car sometime, in the line of sight there, I don't want to, you know, crap on Old Town Motors, but they're busy. And I think with a site plan, they will alleviate the parking issues that we're all worried about, because I think they're probably hearing our concerns and they don't want to, if they didn't want to make this work, they would not petition the town to change the zone.
Well, I don't think they have a choice.
They could just keep on doing what they're doing, I guess.
No, they would shut it down.
So, I think they're coming to us with goodwill, and I'm all for upzoning at this point in time.
Okay.
I really don't have anything, this is just the preliminary step, and our purpose in this is just to refer to the planning commission and go from there. It's, we're putting five horses before the cart right now.
Well, hopefully the planning.
There is one more thing I'd like to add, and it's just remind us all, because I have, I tend to do this too, and I keep saying, wait a minute, I shouldn't. We have a planning commission, they know what they're doing. If we've empowered these, if we've given these people a job and empowered it, management one-on-one says you back them and you trust them. So, you know, I'm the same way, it's like, oh, I want to help and, you know, oh, let me help you code. No, go back to my office and let the workers do their magic. And I trust our planning commission to do a good job. And if they find a reason why this shouldn't happen, then we're going to find, we're going to hear about it. And if there is no real reason, well, then we as leaders have a responsibility to back our people and say, well, their answer is X, and unless there's a great reason to say no, I would have to agree with them.
So with that, I'll make a motion.
Well, actually, I haven't.
We can talk after the motions.
No, I have a question.
Okay.
For staff. Has any research been done, or is it even possible to determine if there's been a business license associated with this particular lack of real business happening? Like, do we even know they're doing business as name, or like?
I don't know, I'm not, I'm not.
And my only reason why I bring that up, Joe, is because it's without that licensure, the requirements that a license like that would, would hold accountability for the things that our community in that specific neighborhood has concerns about, i.e., you know, illegal or the potential for illegal dumping of hazardous wa, excuse me, hazardous waste, or the storage of the tires in the area formerly known as the railroad. The, you know, just things that are, that are happening that, yes, we can control with a site plan, but in the meantime, you know, Joe mentioned something, and I know that's not what we're here to talk about tonight, but it is something we need to talk about at some point. Because as far as goodwill is concerned, you know, this all started when the business wanted to, or the property owner on behalf of the business was trying to prove that they didn't need to change the zoning, because the business ever went out of business, when everybody that lives in Sykesville knows that it was out of business for many years. And so I, I have gotten a lot, and I've only forwarded a few of them to Joe, a lot of communication, both electronic and phone calls, and being stopped on Main Street, and on my walks in the neighborhood. So we do need to have that conversation.
What conversation?
The conversation about whether or not this is something that needs to stop until while this petition is pending.
Stop and cease, whatever.
When is the next planning commission meeting?
Sagan.
It's next.
In two weeks.
Okay.
Yep. Twenty-five?
No, it's the first Monday of October.
Two weeks.
It's like three weeks, three or four weeks.
I mean, we could probably put this on the agenda for the end of September. Well, I'm sorry, what?
This discussion about whether or not, or do we just decide tonight?
I think, I think I already have clear direction on that.
Okay, thank you.
And what business name are they operating under?
We don't know.
I mean, what, the shop doesn't have a name?
No, not visible.
Okay.
Joe, for operational purposes, we're going to refer this to the planning commission. The planning commission will come back to us with their decision or with.
Or recommendation.
With their recommendation is, then we will be holding a public hearing.
Right.
And that's where everybody can come, public can give us their input, and then at that point, we can render a decision.
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that for the public.
Can I ask one more question, just as we're researching it, or just so I understand? Where this former railroad is, they're not asking for a zoning change, it could be used as a parking, it is, you know.
Additional off-site parking.
Right. We have had discussions here, and we've had another proposal kind of come forward from the community about a walking path through the old railroad, right? That comes out right here, this is where it comes out. And so I guess, how, as we address zoning changes, the new zoning that is coming forward, the protect, is this an easement? Is there a protection around that historic process? And like, how does that get affected or played into in the, like, because it's something that's come here, but not the planning commission, like, I don't understand how that all.
Yeah, well, again, my understanding of where the railroad track is, that's a separate lot that they've at least attempted to petition to make, like, basically private property. And if they've done that and recorded the deed that says that, then there is no protection from the town, or there's nothing else that we can do with that particular piece of property. Now, there are other areas within town where that Nicky Track used to be, that may still be up in the air, or people haven't taken those kinds of actions to take over those areas, where we could potentially do some kind of linear trail along there. But my understanding is that particular one, they've, they've already, I don't know if it was an old deed that just got recorded, or they just went through that process recently.
Yeah, so the date on it is pretty new.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But again, I don't, I don't think that's anything that we have the ability to protect or try to.
Okay, so that's now their private property, that's, even though it says former railroad, that's not part of the.
Right.
I just didn't know how, like.
If you look at the black lines, that is all theirs, the dark, the dark black line.
Okay.
That, everything within that is theirs.
Cool.
Got it, thank you.
Cool. Okay, so with no further questions for staff, presumably, great. The staff is recommending that we move to refer the zoning map amendment for the property located at 7306 Springfield Avenue to the planning commission for their report and recommendation.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, so the motion was made by Councilman Grassley and seconded by Councilman Schofield.
One extra piece of conversation or discussion after it is, I actually really did appreciate the conversation and the questions. I think it's important that we tell the planning commission what we want them to go look at. It actually, I think, cuts down on some of the back and forth that could occur, so I think that that was a useful use of 30, 40 minutes, or whatever it was, because it'll make their jobs a little bit easier, and hopefully render the decision to town wallets.
Hopefully, they'll look at the video.
Right.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, so at this point, at this moment, I will call for a vote, and as I repeat the motion on the table, which is to refer the zoning map amendment for the property located at 7306 Springfield Avenue to the planning commission for report and recommendation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that looks unanimous. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And that brings us to our announcements and reports, if I'm not mistaken. Why do I have the next meeting is Monday, September 25th. Why are we talking about October?
Planning commission.
Planning commission.
They were talking about planning commission.
Oh, thank you. I was like, why am I looking at you and saying October? And I'm, okay, thank you. So our next town council meeting is here at 7:00 PM on September 25th.
The most important meeting.
Yes, the most important, October. We have volunteer opportunities available at the Historic District Commission, at the Parks and Recreation Commission, as well as the Police Auxiliary. Anyone interested, please email town@Sykesville.net for more info about volunteering with the lovely town of Sykesville. Staff updates, we will begin with Chief Spalding with our public safety report, please. And then I will let Joe, who's hoarse by now, speak if he has any further updates.
I used to go before, Joe.
I know. You've been so patient this whole time.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, chief.
Sorry I couldn't be here with you at the last meeting, and I know my trusted second-in-command did an able job.
As always.
I peeked in on the video, so I'm keeping an eye on you.
You have to, just say it.
My job. Uh, I'd like to start before I get to the PSR and, and review some of the questions that were submitted by one of our council members. Uh, the first question was regarding suspicious persons at Warfield. The question was, was the person ever found or questioned? And the answer to that is no. The two spots, two suspects, which we have a description of, were neither located nor questioned. I did submit a copy of the photograph for your review, just so you would see, uh, who were the persons, I think, uh, the suspicious persons in question.
I do not recognize either of them.
Nor did we.
So, were, were they determined to do anything illegal? They just looked a little-
They were on the property.
Okay.
Brought our attention by the current property owners that, uh, they were there without permission.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Yep. Second question was regarding a hit-and-run accident and I did provide an update on that, but it was basically, uh, right here at thirty-two in Sandusky, a, a blue Honda Accord, uh, being operated by a town resident had attempted to pass a white Ford Transit van in the right turn lane at, at the light there, southbound thirty-two. Uh, as it did so, the right, uh, the left rear of the Honda Accord struck the, the front right of the transit van and vehicles continued. Uh, the operator of the transit van was able to get a tag number. Uh, was called into Howard County, I believe, Lieutenant Kilgore was able to find the, uh, registered operator of the vehicle. We brought him back to the scene and had a chat with him and ended up, uh, multiple citations were issued to him for failing to remain at the scene of an accident as well as, uh, I believe going through the light.
Compared to a Bay Traffic Code.
Yeah, yeah.
So not only did he cause the accident and the damage, he ran the red light?
Uh, no, he, he actually drove straight through-
Went through the turn lane, through the intersection.
Oh, lovely.
Passing the transit van.
Great, okay, thank you.
Yep, it was a great job by, I believe Officer Hoppa, assisted by our fine lieutenant. Uh, the third question was regarding a malicious burning. And again, it was an excellent job by Officer Hoppa. Uh, we, it was intentional, uh, and she was able to identify juvenile suspects and question them, him, and, uh, he confessed to not only this incident, but two prior incidents of burning our, uh, paper trash, no, refuse trash bags that were set out at the, the curb, so.
For the yard waste?
Yes. So, uh, he is being charged to the Department of Juvenile Services.
So it was not his yard?
No.
Gotcha.
And the next question was involving, we had two, several assaults. This was an assault that occurred at a residence on Autumn Sky Court. Uh, it was a very complicated investigation, uh, but in the end, it was determined to be a mutual assault involving a female male party and, um, since we couldn't determine who the primary aggressor was, they were both arrested and charged accordingly. And the last one was another domestic assault, um, and you asked about, uh, the outcome and charges. There was a physical altercation between two sisters inside their residence, adult sisters, uh, which their mother and one of the sister's boyfriends were present. The dominant aggressor was determined to be one of the sisters and she was charged in, as an adult, taken before the commissioner.
Thanks, Chief.
Of course.
Uh, follow-up question to the one on Autumn Sky. Uh, were, are they both residents of that? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Getting on to the public safety report covering the period, uh, August eighth through September fourth. Again, another very busy month for us. I believe the last one that you reported on was over a thousand events. This one, eight-hundred-and-fourteen events, some of the highlights, twenty-one assists other agency. Community policing numbers are still, still up, sixteen, uh, fifty-two foot patrols, four-hundred patrol checks, forty-two traffic enforcement initiatives. Again, eight-hundred-and-fourteen events, as well as seventeen incident reports were authored during the same period. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have about any of those incident reports.
Just, uh, two comments from me. One, thank you again for community policing. Please thank all the officers. I like to say that every time I can. And then noticed a couple of, or at least one incident where, uh, one of the officers stopped on their way home and was a, uh, was a really good thing that they did. Um, probably kept, uh, other people out of harm's way. So, just wanna say a great job in policing there.
Appreciate that. Yep, yep. They're always, always on duty, even though our, our jurisdiction is limited, but we're covered within this county with special deputy, uh, status so that, you know, if, if they see something happen that requires them to stop going to and from work, they're able to do so and they're covered under, under that agreement, so.
I'd like to make a personal thank you. Um, item number zero-zero-two-zero-one, they found wallet on Lyons Mill Road in Owings Mills. I happened to find out that my daughter, who's moving from one location to the other, lost her wallet. She either dropped it or left it on the truck and drove away from the, uh, Best Buys in Owings Mills. And I get a phone call from, um, the LT and Corporal Schlerf saying, "You know this young woman?" I said, "Yeah, I do. I was there when she was born." And, um, we were able to return the wallet to her and the only thing lost was dad's temper. Still gotta be careful. Yeah, thought of him. Um, saved a lot of grief and stomach, my stomach lining. I very much appreciate it. And there's another one here that did not get entered, but I wanted to thank you. There is a gate at the top of our property that I haven't opened in a decade and my wife checked a couple of weeks ago and it was closed properly. Well, someone was trespassing on our property, just left the gate open. So when my other daughter's dogs, one of which is a rescue and terrified of people, was let loose into our backyard, he promptly ran out. I called your department and said, "Look, if you're on patrol and you happen to see a dog you're not expecting, give me a call." Officer Young did so.
Wow.
That narrowed the search down from the entire linear trail and the entire area down to a smaller area. We were able to corral the dog back in, thanks to her observation of, "Hey, I happen to see a dog in this area." It saved me a couple, and my wife, a couple hours. And at our age, two or three hours running around in the woods is not, is contraindicated. So, her being observant made my life simpler. So, in each case, you guys really saved the day for us and I just wanna thank you. My wife is on the verge of tears and thanks to Officer Young, she was smiling when we finally got that dog back in the door.
I bet.
Great news.
Officer comments alone.
Council President Carden has a question for you.
I did, going back, um, about officers assisting to and from work. They have taken cars.
They do.
Yeah, so that makes things-
One of the advantages of having them, yep.
Thank you.
Of course.
Good question.
Thank them.
I will.
Anyone to my right?
Yeah, just also, I continue to be amazed at the amount of reports of officers coming to or from somewhere and stopping and, you know, what they're doing is, is amazing and completely appreciated, not just within our town, but-
Appreciate that.
So, yeah, definitely notice it on regular reports.
Councilman Keenan?
Kind of job, you're kind of on duty all, at all times, even in uniform and, and out of uniform and you have an obligation to assist when you can.
Councilmember Keenan, anything for the chief?
No, Chief and I talked earlier.
Oh, wow. Yeah, I was out there earlier. Um, I have a question for you, Chief. Report number one-nine-eight. Was the malicious destruction of property, our old stone house, our, our, our cannery warehouse or-
Right, it was, yep.
Both of them?
It was-
The big warehouse or the stone house?
The big warehouse, yeah. I wanna call it the apple butter factory, but I don't-
Well, it's the cannery warehouse, sir.
Yeah, it's the cannery warehouse. There was three wooden slats removed. And, uh, I did wanna mention that Officer Young, since her name came up, actually took the initiative to personally replace those wooden slats. She's done that before at Warfield, um, so apparently she's got some woodworking skill.
Cool.
She's carrying a drill with some screws. I love it. Well, tell her we said thank you.
I will. Absolutely.
That was my only question for you.
All right, if that's it, I did wanna mention two other real quick things. I'm proud to announce that our new recruit, Anthony Bond, will be starting the Carroll County Sheriff's Office Entry Level Training Academy on Monday, September eighteenth. So we're looking, uh, very forward to him successfully completing that. It's six months. He'll graduate in, uh, March thirty-first, I believe. So we'll follow his progress closely and I'll report back to you, uh, some of the things that we hear. And, but, uh, we're very excited to have a new member of our department just beginning his, his career with us and his, his training, so very excited.
Did you tell him that he has big shoes to follow with, uh-
The last-
I did.
With the last recruits?
All three, yeah, absolutely.
That he needs to come up with at least nineties.
Pressure on that guy.
No pressure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's, he's up to the challenge, I believe, yep. And lastly, I did wanna mention our fourteenth annual Junior CSI Academy will go on, uh, this next, uh, September sixteenth, Saturday, September sixteenth. Currently have about thirty students registered for it, which is kind of the number we're, we're shooting for. So we're looking very much forward to that and, uh, every year the kids seem to enjoy it and the parents as well, so, uh, should be a good time. Couple new surprises this year.
It's one of those things that are offered here, um, that aren't in a brick and mortar, um, that isn't drinking or eating, um, and I just like to point that out. And that's not a slap in anybody's direction. That's just, there's lots going on downtown and, uh, offered by the town of Sykesville that, uh, other than, than one location, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Um, that brings us to, uh, Joe, if he has anything further for us?
Only a few quick ones. A reminder to council that the fall M&amp;L concert, uh, conference is coming up, yeah, council. Check that line up. Um, it is gonna be held October fifteenth through the seventeenth at College Park, so if anybody's interested in attending, please let us know, uh, sooner or later so that we can go ahead and get you signed up and registered. And then-
Cause the clerk does that. Yes, cause the clerk does that.
The clerk, yeah, it's one of the five. Not, not going away from the clerk's duties. Um, the only other one is, uh, I know we had discussed briefly before, uh, doing a workshop or, uh, maybe even, uh, an agenda item, uh, on the next council agenda about taxes or something along those lines. And I wanted to get on everybody's radar that, you know, I guess I wanted to hear preference from everybody as to whether or not we did want a separate standalone workshop for that or if we just wanted it on the next agenda to talk.
What does the potential next agenda include?
Yeah, no, there's-
I know it's far off and-
Yeah, there's, there's likely a, uh, we're getting ready to, um, actually just release an RFP for, uh, some trail repaving, so we hope to be able to approve that. Uh, there might be another agenda or two that I'm forgetting about, but, um, it's likely a light agenda. It could be something where we, we call it a, a brief meeting and adjourn to a workshop or vice versa.
Yeah.
The, um, I know I asked for the September, uh, discussion. I actually don't care when the discussion occurs. I just want it to be well in enough in advance for us to have a meaningful discussion so that we can incorporate it into whatever budget, uh, discussions that we have as we plan for the next cycle. So, it doesn't, it can be September, October, it doesn't matter to me.
Sooner the better.
Yeah, sooner the better. And I think it sounds like it's such a light agenda, maybe we do, I like the idea of a, of a quick one and then, uh, adjourn to a workshop.
Okay.
Cool. Or vice versa, sure.
Uh, I'll send out some details for everybody and that way we can, we can get that coordinated for September twenty-fifth.
Awesome. Thank you, Joe.
Very good.
And that's it for you? Okay, cool. Uh, that brings us to council committee reports. I'll begin with Councilmember Dyer on my far left, if you have anything.
I have nothing this, this time.
I don't have anything related to planning commission, but I do wanna say thank you to Joe publicly and to Derek and, um, other folks in Public Works for installing a new sign on Oklahoma. And so as you bend around the turn there, you can see how fast you're going.
Yep.
Just wanna say thank you very much for getting that one in.
Shame on anyone driving a red bus.
I noticed, I noticed another one, um, I think, uh, that looked new as well up near the church. Uh, is, is that one new? Maybe I missed that one, but-
You mean the crossing one?
But there's a solar, there's a solar one there too.
Yeah, yeah, so there's one in each direction. It's for the schools, uh, school kids crossing.
So, I just, I've seen a couple of these go in and just wanna say thank you very much for getting them in. And, and the way that the one in Oklahoma came out was just, uh, walking around and talking to different folks and them showing an, an interest in an issue with, you know, I think someone said maybe throwing rocks at cars or something and perhaps this is a better way to be able to, hey, hey, slow down when you're driving around that bend there. It's a dangerous bend. It's one-way. Wow, there's cars that line up one side.
Since you brought up the other one on Scott Hill Road, I would like to point out that your request on behalf of your, your, your community, um, was answered in record-breaking time. Because my specific request for the kids to cross safely on Scott Hill Road took about two-point-three years.
Well, you know, this one, this one took less, so that's good. And it got done.
She was still mad at you.
Yeah, she was still mad at you.
And, and we do appreciate the, the kudos, particularly to Public Works. I will add that Kevin Rubenstein, our town planner, actually was, uh, very instrumental in getting those.
Both of those, all three of those, yeah.
Thank you for, uh, raising that, Chuck.
Sure, absolutely.
I was thinking that you were thanking him for the trash can container.
Not yet.
Not yet. The bombers are still in-
But he still has a little less than a year to go to get to the two-point-three. So we're, we're working towards that end. And all of that was just for you.
I have nothing.
Thank God. Do you have anything?
Uh, no, the movie, well, yes, Parks and Rec, uh, movie was canceled due to weather.
Yeah.
And we've got some more events coming up, uh, music and things like that, so.
Are they family fun events?
They, they should be.
Good.
Yeah.
I will say, if anybody was anxious to see, uh, the Mighty Ducks movie, uh, that got canceled, it will be on the agenda for, uh, next year. So it'll be in that lineup. And then we did just get notice that in all likelihood, uh, we will be delaying the skate event, uh, that was originally gonna be scheduled for October seventh. Uh, it looks like now it is gonna be pushed to the spring, so, um-
Okay.
Again, uh, date to be determined.
Again, another opportunity of, for, for young people. Awesome. Councilman Grassley?
Got nothing.
Councilman Keenan?
Just a couple of things for the DSC. Um, everybody probably knows by now, but we have a new event coordinator. She's a Sykesville resident, Brianna Batson. Uh, she's taking over for Elizabeth. Uh, Brianna is a Sykesville resident and former event coordinator for the Ullman Foundation in Baltimore. Uh, the DSC golf tournament, uh, was once again a success. It sold out of registration and featured for the first time a beer tasting on the green, which the players apparently appreciated. Uh-
First time?
Yes, we did.
Well, it was, it was a, it was a formal beer tasting.
Oh.
Or formally.
Formal, yes.
A planned event.
Really, it really helped, uh, it really helped Councilman, uh, Grassley putt better. So, to put that down, he even got an eagle.
He did.
Just saying. Just saying.
No, no, it's true.
We all saw it. Impressive.
I, I have it on tape.
It was impressive.
I have it on tape.
It's a good thing. An eagle's a good thing.
No, I know. Sorry, it's fun of you for having made it.
Oh, no, no, no. It was fun. It was a, that was a great event.
Good, good. Uh, the DSC's twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three impact sheet has been designed and is posted on the website under About Us. Uh, Fall Fest, coming up on October twenty-first, will feature free activities for all to enjoy, including pumpkin carving, circus, school, puppet show and more. And also the Coolest Mile is now gonna be called the Snally Gastro Race and will take place at Freedom Park on November nineteenth. That's it.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna pull something up real fast. I have an announcement. Um, there is a October seventh, I believe. Yes. Uh, the Springfield Hospital Center is hosting a mental health day, five K and one mile fun walk. And, uh, that will take place, uh, primarily on their hospital grounds, but also will be inclusive of, uh, the, uh, Dorsey Park Walk, uh, path around the pond and, um, part of, uh, uh, Warfield Avenue and Chief's aware and will be, uh, helping with traffic control there. So, uh, did I say the date? I didn't.